Okay, good evening and welcome to the November 16th Palmer Town Council meeting. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so tonight's, the purpose of tonight's meeting is to interview candidates for the interim town manager position. We have three interviews that we will be doing. Mr. White has withdrawn from consideration and then after those interviews, we will meet with Community Paradigm remotely regarding the town manager search. Then we will have discussion and a vote on who to hire for the interim town manager and who to hire for an appointment of a consultant for the search. With that, we'll begin. Matt, if you want to get Mr. Blanchard. And if someone can like help us to keep like to that 30 minutes, that would be really great.
Yeah, we'll start quarter after.
Because we're already 15 minutes late.
Yeah, I know.
So we can make a choice.
Well, they may not all need a half hour as well.
We need to ask every, so the same questions will be asked to every candidate. Hi Charlie.
How are you?
Charlie, how you doing, sir?
How are you?
Good.
How are you?
Hi Charlie, good to see you again.
Mike, quick question.
Hey Charlie.
How's the knee going?
Getting there, thank you.
Good, good. That's great. Hi, hi. Anywhere here?
Either, either one is fine, Charlie. So the first interview is with Charlie Blanchard. Charlie, we have, we're each going to ask you a question and then if there's a need for any follow-ups, we will do that at the end and then we'll give you an opportunity to ask any questions of the council.
Great.
We have about a half an hour for each interview, just so that you can kind of gauge your answers.
Sure.
Okay? And we'll start with Jessica.
Okay, thank you. What do you feel is the role of an interim town manager?
Well, that's a good question, Jessica. I think the role is really to just keep the town on track, you know, to keep things moving, you know, get to know what the issues are and really provide a good level of support for the department head and the employees to keep things moving. So, you know, it's certainly a lot of concern during a transition, but I think if you can, you know, be there to answer questions, to, you know, provide support and keep the town moving in the direction that the town council would like it to, that's really what an interim can do.
Thank you.
Great. How do you view the interim town manager's working relationship with the town council?
Well, it's the same it would be with any, you know, town manager, town council. You certainly have to have the support of the town council. You have to know what the town council would like to set for policies and direction for the town. You have to have good communication and openness. So it really doesn't change. I think, you know, really, an interim town manager is the town manager. It's only for a shorter period of time, but you're still doing the same work. You have to have the same relationship, the same concern about making sure that, you know, the direction and the, and the goals of the town council are carried out. So I think that would be my goal. I mean, I've been, you know, I started here actually as the interim, you know, back in 2011. So that was my first exposure to the town and then obviously became the town manager. But since then, I've been the interim in Williamstown for nearly a year. And the uniqueness with that was it was, it was right after COVID and there was a lot of remote participation. I only had to go out there really one day a week initially, so a lot of it was communication by phone, email and so forth. And then most recently, I was the interim for six months in Southbridge. So again, you know, a town council, former government, but you want to, you know, be aware of what the council priorities are and make sure that you're working with the department heads to get that done.
Thank you.
Sure.
So the town needs to continue to move forward, just like you said, right? Point number one, while we're recruiting the full-time. How do you get, how do you go about coming into these situations and get up to speed? Like what's your 30, 60, 90 day?
Well, actually, it's already started away. I mean, in anticipation, I know, you know, we certainly don't know who you're going to choose and so forth, but on the other hand, you know, once I realized I was a finalist sincerely, I want to thank you all for the opportunity to be here and be a finalist to discuss this. But what I did, I mean, I first, you know, got together with the information I had. I took out, you know, the last budget I had prepared was FY '20 and I compared the, you know, the numbers to FY '23 and '24, your current budget, see what the changes were, what changes were made and so forth. And I know you've got some other issues. I, I took out the rate study that was done on the wastewater treatment plant, reviewed that and looked at the stuff on the Stormwater Enterprise Fund and get up to speed on that. And actually, I even went through the town reports and I noticed that there wasn't one for FY '19, which was the last year I was here. And I think what must have happened is during that transition, it really never got published. So I happen to have the report that I prepared for.
Wow, thank you.
And I'll present it to you later, so it'll become part of the record, so at least it'll be there.
It's not going to have any charge tied to that.
What's that?
I'm competent.
Yeah, I'll get them out later. And then, so actually, what I also did is I spent some time on Tuesday. I came in to see, you know, the department heads that I knew, you know, I got to meet Marlene and I, Gabriella and Linda and Sue Koash and so forth. And I got to meet their new assistants that I hadn't met before. And of course, your new assessor, Rachel, I've known because she was the assessor that I had in Southbridge while I was there. And I got to meet the community development, you know, person and so forth. So, you know, you really want to reach out and find out what's going on, get to know the people again. Fortunately, you know, having served as the town manager for eight years, I do know a lot of the people, you know, that are here. And then on Wednesday, I went down to see Kenny Lloyd because I know there were a lot of issues there and I wanted to talk to him about what was happening with the rate increases and so forth. So, and today I was able to meet with, with Matt Morris and I was really impressed with what's going on down there. I mean, the place is cleaned up, it's in great shape and so forth. So, you know, you really try to just learn what's going on and find out where it is that you can help.
Thanks. Sure.
The next question is, how do you go about putting a budget together as the interim, ensuring that finances remain strong and also prioritizing capital projects to ensure that the most important items are addressed and critical items?
Well, I think, again, I mean, even though you're in here as the interim doing that, you know, you're doing it the same way you would as the town manager. And, you know, when I was here before, I mean, the steps we tried to do is meet with the council, find out what the priorities were for the town council, you know, meet with the schools, find out what kind of projects they have, what kind of needs they have, what kind of funds are available. And I know that, you know, there's been several years have gone by since I was here and if the council has any other views on how they want to do it, I'd certainly work with them. I know, I think the last few years I was here, you had sort of a subcommittee, you know, that worked with the town manager on developing the budget. So I, I'd really, you know, take the lead from the council as to how you want to handle it. But having prepared, you know, eight budgets for the town, you know, I, I'm familiar with the town, I know how to prepare a budget and I would treat it really no differently than I would as a town manager. You know, the interim manager is the manager until somebody else comes in.
Oh, sorry. It's been a long day already.
I bet it has, Phil.
I just got out of work.
Well, I'm glad you made it here. Thank you.
So how do you continue to, when you come in, develop a working relationship with your department heads and build confidence between everyone within the town departments here?
Well, I mean, as I mentioned before, Phil, I, I think it really is just having, you know, good communication, being, you know, concerned about, you know, what people are doing. I mean, I came in, I missed Bonnie earlier when I was here because she was out inspecting and I noticed the door was open, so I wanted to say hello to her, finding what's going on, you know. So a lot of it is, you know, having an open door policy, you know, being here to answer the questions. I mean, one of the big things that I think a manager can do is provide the information they need as soon as possible with the answers they need so they can keep moving. In, you know, communities that don't have a town administrator, they're relying on a board of selectmen, a lot of times what happens is, you know, decisions don't get made or answers don't get back until there's another board meeting. And so, you know, you want to avoid that. You want to be able to be the resource that the department head needs in order to get their job done.
It seems Carl's not here. What methods would you use to develop trust with and expand the town's, the capacity of town employees?
Well, I mean, understanding, you know, what their challenges are, what their weaknesses might be, I mean, if somebody needs training or support, you know, you really want to know about that. But, I mean, I think the one unique thing, you know, that I do bring into this is the fact that I do have, I think, a pretty good relationship with a lot of the department heads that were already here. I mean, I went down to the council on aging today and I, I saw Marlene down there and she filled me in on what was going on, changes that were made down there, training she went through to become a better, you know, manager. So, I mean, I, I have a relationship and a rapport with most of the people and I, I think, you know, they enjoyed having me here when I worked with them before. I think they respect me, I certainly respect them. So I, you know, I think that I would continue to do what I tried to do, you know, while I was here as the permanent, you know, town manager.
Charlie, I have just a quick one. As far as keeping residents and businesses more informed as what's going on in town, were you key into doing like Facebook posts and town website updates and that kind of thing?
Well, town website posts, you know, more on, you know, the, you know, town manager's page than maybe Facebook, but I know, you know, when I was here before, you know, we did try to get some Facebook things going, we came up with a policy and so forth and I, I don't know how, you know, well that's really working, but it's certainly very important to let the public know what's going on. And I, I think one of the things that becomes a, a good way to do that is to provide good reports and good information to the town council meetings. I mean, people really, you know, pay attention more probably to the meeting end of it and follow-up from the meetings on what's going on. And so as much information and clarity you can give on any issue to the council and then also to the public really helps. I mean, we had some issues here when I was here before. We had around Lake Thompson, we had those big issues about the road conditions. We had several meetings with them. We had a lot of discussion and communication on what we were going to try to do to fix them and I think we made some big improvements, but from what I've watched in some of the meetings, apparently some of that needs to be done again.
Correct. Thanks Charlie.
Okay. Did anybody have any follow-up questions to anything that was stated?
I just, during union negotiations, how do you keep the council involved or up to date, I guess I should say?
Well, you know, as I did, you know, before, I mean, I did negotiate all, you know, the contracts, you know, while I was here. And, you know, what I tried to do would be, you know, to meet with the council initially to find out what kind of issues, you know, you want to deal with, let you know what some of the demands are. I think the most challenging one we had here, and I've noticed that in every community I've been in, is usually with the DPW. I think we started out here and they had like something like 50 response, yes, request initially that we had to pare down to where we could really start negotiating with them. So, again, I think, I think it's, you know, trying to develop, you know, good communication with the council, letting them know what's going on, what the issues really are and getting some feedback on the direction that they feel we should go in. I mean, I have negotiated several contracts. I even negotiated one in the short time I was in Williamstown because the police really, you know, wanted to get that, that done and we were able to do that. So it's, it's, again, it's, it's getting the information out to the council, understanding what your views are, letting you know what the limits are and what we can afford to do, what we can't afford to do and working together to get these things done.
Did you want somebody else to ask that last question? There we go. Set aside for Carl.
I thought Phil already asked it.
It might have been when you, it might have been when you got it.
Charlie answered it anyway.
So if you were offered the position of the interim town manager, when would you be available to start?
Well, I'd be available really right away. I mean, I'm, I'm not doing anything else. I mean, if we were able to, you know, reach a contract agreement next week, I'd be happy to, you know, start on, what is it, the 27th is the Monday, I guess.
That's great, thank you.
And I mean, I did in the, as requested in the letter of interest, I did, you know, put in my salary requirements. It certainly is negotiable, but the information I presented, it's the way I really did it in Southbridge and also in Williamstown and it works well because, I mean, one of the things I've always felt is though, you know, certainly with an interim, you know, you don't want somebody to be paying him 40 hours a week and so forth, but nonetheless, it's still a 24/7 job. And I think in the cover letter I gave you, I gave you the number of hours I actually had worked in, in, in Southbridge. And I, I think I was really, my salary was based on 24 hours a week, you know, at a reasonable, I think, hourly rate. But over the course of, of the 26 weeks I was there, it actually averaged 34 hours a week. And there were several hour, several weeks, particularly during the budget season where I put in 50 hours or 45 hours, whatever it happened to be. But a lot of that is at home, a lot of it is on weekends. You know, Barbara knows that. I drive by the town hall, I know, on a, on a Saturday and a Sunday, your car is there in the busy season and you have to do what you have to do. And so even though, you know, the, the salary would be based on that 24 hours a week, I would put in whatever time is necessary to get the job done. And, you know, a lot of it with today's technology is getting an email out to somebody at night or a call at different times. And again, a lot of the work I did in, in Williamstown was remote. I mean, I had a lot more hours working remotely than I did in the town, but again, the work got done, the information got out there and the work that the town manager had to do got done than I did.
Was there anything that you wanted to, you know, say to us that we maybe didn't ask you that you wanted to express or any questions you had?
No, I mean, I thought it was, it was kind of interesting in a way. This is kind of a unique, kind of an interview. I mean, generally, people, we want to meet the, the candidate to get to know them. I mean, I've worked with five of you, you know, for a long time, probably at least one term and some of them, you know, three terms or two terms and, and one the whole, you know, eight years I was here. So I think you know me, I know most of you and I enjoyed my time here. I, I, I have a lot of good feelings about Palmer. When I heard this opening was going to be here, I had hoped that I would get the job because I feel that, you know, I had quite a commitment here. I know you saw from my resume, I mean, my career as a, as a full-time municipal manager was rather late in my career. I mean, most of my municipal experience in the first probably 20 years of my experience were really, was really as an elected or an appointed official. And so that, that's one of the reasons that even after I retired from, from Paxton, that I picked it up again and enjoyed, you know, doing this. And, and so a lot of my management career has been involved with Palmer and I certainly would look forward to helping you get through this period. You know, it, it's a difficult market out there. There's a lot of people, you know, looking for managers and administrators and there isn't really a huge pool of people going into that. So it is challenging. You have to, have to do the best you can to, you know, attract a good candidate and I'd certainly want to do whatever I could to help you support that and also keep the town on the right direction while you're heading in that direction.
Well, thank you Charlie.
Well, thank you.
Thanks for coming in and for your time.
I appreciate it.
Thank you Charlie.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. I will, I'll give you these because I thought it was kind of interesting when I couldn't find one on a website. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you Charlie.
And thanks for the legwork coming in the last couple of days and getting re-familiar. That means a lot.
Thank you.
You definitely have to enjoy it to do it.
All right, good seeing you. Take care.
You as well.
Do you want to go get, Mr. Reed? Mr. Reed?
Good evening.
Good evening. Right over there, sir.
Hi Bob, how are you today?
Good, how are you?
Good, good.
Hello everybody.
Hi.
So our next interview is with Robert Reed. And so Bob, what we're going to do is we each have a question to ask you, okay? And then if there's any follow-ups on anything you say, we'll do that at the end and then we'll give you up, an opportunity to ask any questions of us or anything that you want to tell us that we might not have touched on during the interview. How's that sound? Good? Okay, perfect. Jess, we'll start.
Hi.
Hi.
My question is, I just would like to know what you, what do you feel is the role of the interim town manager?
Well, I think that, I mean, I haven't seen, I think probably all the applicants will say this, I don't see a difference between the role of the interim and the permanent person. I, my approach in all the communities that I've been in, I'd like to think, and also if you were to talk to the select boards or councils that I've worked with, they would say that, that that was my approach. Typically, I'm in the town hall three days a week, but it's not a three-day-a-week job. I've worked days off, sometimes those can, those can be the busiest days. I've worked weekends if town meeting was coming up or if there was an emergency, so I mean, as far as the general approach, that's it. I approach it the same way, but my style, if you want to call it that, is very much consensus. I mean, I think the role of the interim is to make sure that things go smoothly, make sure that no deadlines are missed, if there are any construction projects, building projects, any kind of projects, grants, contracts, just to make sure that the town doesn't skip a beat, to get up to speed as quickly as possible and make sure that any deadlines or, you know, important projects are met. But I think that, also I think that an interim is an opportunity. I mean, again, I think if you were to talk to select boards or councils that I've worked, they would bear out what I've said. I mean, I don't lead any charges, I don't, you'll be well informed, I don't do things that a board is not aware of, but also, an interim I think is an opportunity. In other words, you can approach the interim position like a consultant and this is somebody who's going to be leaving town. If there are some difficult decisions that need to be made, if there are some difficult projects that need to be tackled, this is the person that can get started on that. But that's not something that I would be doing without your knowledge. I mean, on everything, I'll be taking my cue from the council.
Sure.
So there are two different answers to that question. I mean, there's the consensus answer and then there's the, you know, the consultant answer, if you will.
Sure. All right. How do you view the interim town manager's working relationship with the town council? Kind of already, already touched on it, by keeping everybody informed, using a consensus.
Yeah, I mean, I think the first thing, I mean, one question that you're often asked is what's your first 30 days like or your first two weeks like?
It's coming.
I mean, am I anticipating that?
It's coming.
You know, the first thing that you would be doing is meeting with the council as a group or individually and finding out what your priorities are. I mean, you take your cue from the council. I know the position here is a very strong position, but still, you are the elected representatives of people, it's your town. I mean, I take my cue, if I'm lucky enough to get the position, I take my cue from the council. I, again, you know, won't be leading any charges. I feel that, you know, my management style is one of consensus, but also I think it's going to be important as far as getting up to speed is to meet with department heads. I think I've always been very, very close to department heads, that's where the work is done. I think the role of whether you're an interim or the full-time administrator or manager is to work with and, and help department heads, you know, what are their needs, how are they doing, what can be done to help their department? And you're sort of the liaison between the department heads and the council or the select board, if you will, you know, to, to translate that information to them and, you know, hopefully that comes out in the town budget if they need any kind of financial help or personnel assistance and to work on that, to, to support the, the different departments because that's where the work is done.
Sure. Just a quick follow-up question. We all on the council have demanding full-time jobs during the day. We rely on the town manager to run the town day-to-day, like we do not try to get involved in the day-to-day operations because we're busy working on our own, you know, careers.
Sure.
You use the word consensus a lot. Do you find yourself being able to run without any, any oversight? You know what I mean? Because the town manager, like you said, is a strong position, but you did say that you run off consensus, but we're not always available during the day to bounce things off of. So are you capable of running independently if we're not available 100% of the time?
Well, you have to. By consensus, I meant really keeping the, the council or a select board informed.
Perfect.
And making sure that I'm not going down a road that you don't want me to go down and taking on projects or taking on, you know, tasks or making decisions that is not, you know, what the, what the board would want.
Gotcha. Understood.
Well, you asked yourself my question. First 30 days? First 30 days. So I come from a consulting background, I get it right. So you're coming in, you're attacking, you're trying to figure out the problems, what the priorities are, I guess, and I, you know, you're taking the lead from the council. I'm going to kind of deviate a little, if that's okay?
Yes, of course.
So one of the challenges that you might find when you come into any environment, new environment, is silos, right? So how would you see about going up, like bringing everybody together, making, helping folks work more as a team versus this is what I do, this is what you do and I don't care? Yeah, that's a, that's a great question because, you know, I've been, I've gone into towns where I've seen that and, you know, I think that there are some employees, department heads, I think if that's what we're talking about, different departments, silos. I think it's important that people, whether it's through the budget process or whether it's from a, on a day-to-day basis, feel that they're valued. I use the budget for an example. I mean, department heads may not get what they want, but I think if you explain to them the process and they have faith in the process and they have faith in you and they understand why things ended up the way they did and why they didn't get what they want, then I think that goes a long way. But as I said, I mean, I really value department heads and, and the employees because that's where the work is done and I think that through department head meetings, I think my, there's an old saying about having a management style that's management by walking around and I believe in that. Not just being in touch with department heads on a monthly basis or a weekly basis through department head meetings, but being out in the town hall, talking to them informally. And it's very, very important to me that department heads feel that they can come to me and talk to me, which I haven't always seen in some of the towns that I've been in. I'm not, you know, an edifice and just because I'm town manager, it doesn't mean that I'm a big deal. It means that any even employees can come and talk to me. That's pretty much my management style and I think that goes a long way to, to break that down and break down those silos. You can also find that not just between the department heads and the manager, but also between departments. And it's important to get them working together, whatever it might be, the building permit process or planning or zoning or what have you. And if you, you know, you need to know what those working relationships are between departments and if you see any of those barriers, whether it's because of the organizational structure or people just not getting along, and that's something that you really have to tackle because, you know, it's just, it's just great inefficiency, it leads to hard feelings. So that's important too, to make sure that departments are working together and you don't have those silos, as you say. Thanks, appreciate that.
Do you use that same mentality for dealing with the public, with businesses and residents also? Do you have an open door policy where you?
Sure.
Oh, is it? I'm sorry. No, just leading off of it. No, you're just leading off of it, so I'm just kind of curious.
No, I'd rather have it more of an open, free form and still the questions, but go ahead.
No, yeah, just kind of curious. I mean, you said that you had kind of like an open door policy with employees here at town hall. Just curious if that carries over to the residents and business owners in town too?
Yeah, I've seen managers have that, handle that different ways, you know, there might be a set time of the week where they, but, you know, I try to be flexible, whether it's a citizen or a business or what have you. I mean, their concerns are really, you know, they may be spokespeople for a much larger group as well rather than just themselves. And so, yeah, I mean, absolutely. I think you have to. I mean, I think the public, I mean, transparency is a word that's used so much, but I think that adds a lot to the transparency is for people to feel that they can, everybody in the town hall is approachable. I know the council has to feel that way and your constituents, the town manager isn't any different.
Appreciate it, thanks.
And I'll just touch on what Matt said as well, on that same thing. Matt and I are affiliated with local chambers of commerce, so to that end, we've got a lot of direct ties to local business communities, who are obviously constituents, voters, et cetera. So, we would get maybe a lot of grassroots, bottom-up feedback to relay to, whether it's an interim or a town manager. As far as community, I know he's very active in doing community events, seasonally and annually, that kind of thing, so, just to tie it all together, and it kind of does dov back to maybe social media and that kind of thing, but, if you could just touch, I know it's very vague, but...
Touch on what, social media?
No, just, yeah, in general, bringing all those parameters together, just someone walking in your office saying, hey, I don't have an appointment, do you have five minutes to? A chamber member coming and saying, hey, you wanna plan an event, how would I go about doing that, and directing it to...
The first thought that comes to mind, I don't want to be a wise guy, but it's never five minutes, you know?
I know, I know, but again, I'm a politician as well, so, yeah, you get the drill.
No, I don't mean with council, the council would have as much time as you want, but I'm just talking about, you know, the citizen that comes in.
I get it.
But I guess the way I'd answer that is, I'd touch on what I said before, as far as, you know, representatives of the chamber, or whomever, representatives of a neighborhood, they're probably not just speaking for themselves, they're probably speaking for a group of people, whatever that group is. And, you know, I think it's important to have those spokespeople, and it's even more important that they not feel that the door is closed against them, because they're representatives of a larger group, but I think that's very important. And, yeah, I mean, if I am not rushing off to a meeting, or whatever, then, yeah, you make time and you listen to them, that's crucial.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next question has to do with budget, okay? So, as an interim coming into a community, and, you know, the time period that you would be here would obviously be during budget season, if you were to be hired, how do you go about putting together the town budget as an interim, ensuring that finances remain strong, and then how do you prioritize capital projects to ensure that items of importance are addressed?
Well, I have to admit, I didn't, I don't think it's a very efficient use of time to do a lot of research, and go online, and so on, I mean, I can learn five, in five minutes from the town accountant, would it, would take an hour online, but I assume there's a, to answer the last question, there's a capital budget process, so, and that would determine what the priorities would be, and I'd be working off of that.
You would think that.
I would.
So there actually isn't?
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's something I've tried to get started in different communities that I've been in, even as interim, to have a capital budget process. I mean, that's, that's a very, very important part of your budget process, so I could certainly help you with that. But, I think that I would look at what the process has been through the years, not try to deviate from that too much, if it's been successful. Like I said, I don't come in here and try to make Palmer, or any town, in my image and likeness, if there's a way that you've done things that's been successful, and people are comfortable with, and I'm all for continuing with that, although, I think if you have somebody who's coming in with a fresh set of eyes, that's worked in different communities, and maybe some suggestions on how you could improve things, starting with a capital process. But I think that working off what has already been done, but I think, the other thing is important to get started early, and have the council informed, to start doing budget projections, having not just a five-year capital plan, but probably a five-year financial forecast, although, that's, tends to be a lot less reliable than the capital plan, I mean, after one or two years, it's just guesstimates, but at least it gives you a framework to be working off of, and it helps to set up the priorities, you know, getting back to the silos from earlier, if there's departments that have been feeling a little estranged, or alienated from the budget process, I mean, that helps do those projections, and explain to them where you're going, helps with collective bargaining, you know, so I think that that approach, if it's been successful here in Palmer, then I'm continuing with it, but depending on what it looks like, I mean, I could have ideas, like, I don't know if I can get into specifics right now, but ideas on how it can be improved.
Just some insight on that, we normally put together a three-member subcommittee for the budget, who meets with the town manager, and with the finance committee, or the finance department, I should say, finance staff, and they are the ones that do all of the review, and the negotiating, and things like that, and then, at the end, they just present it to the rest of the council, and then the council takes a vote. So, pretty much all of the negotiating, all the changes, anything that we, we need to make, you know, recommendations on, that all goes through the three-member subcommittee.
I think that's great, I'll take all the help I can get.
And it is, it's usually, it's a lot easier, and we found out doing it that way, it makes the process a lot smoother, it cuts down a lot of questions at the end, when we're trying to pass the budget.
I guess that gets back to what I said earlier, if there's a way in Palmer that's been tried and true, I like that, you know, I think I'd be all for that. Also, fresh eyes.
Yes, yes, fresh eyes is great.
How do you, how do you develop a working relationship with your department heads and staff, and keep a healthy, productive environment?
Yeah, yeah, that's a good question, that's a tough question. I think, well, it's the same way with the council, I think, it all just comes down to a matter of trust. I think them, they have to know that they can talk to you, that, you know, you take them seriously, I mean, more than seriously, I mean, they're, they're where the work gets done, as I say, they're absolutely critical. So I think it's a matter of building up trust, and that's something that happens over time. It's not like, you know, well, this is who I am, and they expect you to believe you right off the bat. But it's, it's, it's a day-to-day thing, it's like the management by walking around, and showing them that you're concerned, finding out not just how their department's doing, but, you know, how are you doing? How are you holding up? Do you need help? Do you have the support that you need? Are you under stress? I think that goes a long way as well, just addressing the relationship on a personal level, I think can be very helpful, because that resonates with people. So that, it takes time, but it's critical, the relationship with department heads is really where it's at, in my book.
I think exactly, I answered Carl, the question, it was for Carl, how do you develop trust in...
You earn it, you know, you just don't walk in and expect it, you don't get it because you're town manager, you get it because you earn it.
So I know we kind of asked your question, too, right?
Yeah, I'm good.
You good?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. So, one, the last question we have for you is, if you were selected as interim, when would you be available to start?
Heard Monday. I don't know, there's just a small item of contract, but that...
In theory.
Yeah, that should take two seconds, it's like a page and a half, but I could start right away.
Okay. And then, did you have any questions for us, or anything that you wanted to highlight that we maybe didn't talk about?
Well, I, I just made a note to myself, I wanted to get back to the consensus part, and, one thing that I do, and I've done in the different towns that I've been in, is sort of send a weekend's update to the board. It helps me, knowing that I've communicated with them, and, well, wait a second, I told you about this, here it is in an email, but to send an email out to them, just covering everything that I can think of, what's come up during the week, and not to bog things down with minutia, I mean, you don't need to know about every phone call, or what have you, although council members can be different about different things, but, to let the council know what's happening, what could potentially be an issue, what's coming up, what I've been working on, and just to make sure that you're informed, you don't like surprises.
No.
And it's my job to make sure that you're not surprised, to the best of my ability. And just to do that, and I try to do that at the end of every week, to send out an update, to summarizing the week, what happened during the week, what's gonna be coming up in the short and the long term as well, to try and inform, whether it's the select board or the council, as much as possible.
Great.
Well, thank you for coming in, appreciate it.
Did he have any questions for us?
I thought that's what, I thought that was just it.
Statement.
Oh, just a statement, that's fine.
Elaborate on that a little bit, but no, I mean, things will come out over time, if I'm lucky enough to get the, get the job.
Okay, well, thank you, Bob.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Could you pull in the next one?
Did I what?
Pull in?
Yes.
Okay.
You good? I'll stand with you.
Thanks, Bob.
There we go.
See you.
You look like you're in pain.
A little bit, it's okay, though.
Great to see you.
Nice to see you.
Nice to meet you.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, pleased to see you.
Nice to meet you.
Good luck, we'll be back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Thanks for coming out.
Do we know if the next person is here yet?
I think, I heard something.
A text, so I don't know.
I think I heard Phil saying hi to somebody in the hall.
Oh, you want to just check, and then if not, we'll just take a recess, instead of staying on.
Agreed.
Glad we're rolling. Swear we fear we're gonna be late.
It's always when answers get answered, and our questions get answered.
And other questions.
Well, right, yeah.
Do you know how to say Slazak?
All the way over.
Slazak, I believe.
Right over there, sir.
Over here?
Yep, right on the end.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Matt Slazak, happy you invited me.
Thank you.
So have at me.
Nice to meet you, we're gonna wait one second while our councillor Heber comes back, and then we'll get started, if that's okay? He escaped for some reason.
Saw the door was open.
I hear him coming. He wasn't out for fresh air.
Looking for candy.
Okay, so...
No, it wasn't candy, I did hear that.
So, just to let you know, what we're gonna do is, each councillor will ask you a question. If there's any follow-ups, we'll try to do that at the end, to anything that you said, we'll then give you an opportunity to let us know anything that we might not have asked you that you want to highlight, and we'll give you an opportunity to ask any questions, if you have any questions at the end, okay? Perfect. All right, we're gonna start with Jess.
Hi. My question is, what do you feel is the role of the interim town manager?
You don't want to say caretaker, because there are things that need to move forward. I've been an interim once before in Sterling, and they ultimately hired me for the position, but while I was the interim, I tried to make sure that the things that need to happen kept happening, and any projects were moving forward, nothing was stalled, but I wasn't there to make big changes. Certainly, I've looked at, I've looked at your budget, I've looked at your capital plan, if I was a permanent administrator or manager, there's certainly things I'd like to change, but I'm not gonna be doing that as an interim.
Thank you.
All right. How do you view the interim town manager's working relationship with the town council?
It's vital. It's vital for any manager to be working with the town council on an active basis. You will get a lot of information from me, you will be updated in real time, although, obviously, you're gonna get emails, you're not supposed to email me back, I just want you to know about things, because if we start getting colloquially back and forth, we've got an open meeting issue, but you're gonna be getting a lot of information, perhaps you'll be telling me too much, we don't need to know about that, and, at every meeting, you're going to be getting reports from me, written reports, which will be put online and shared with the general public, because I think open government is extremely important. I don't know if the former manager was doing that, I couldn't find any such reports online, but if it was happening, it should have been online, and it will be online for me. That's, and, as far as the working relationship, you guys are elected, I'm not, not here, anyway. So, I respect elected officials, you are the voices of the people, you're making the policies, it's only my job to implement them.
Great.
All right.
I read that you had some communication issues with Ryan, I don't want that to happen.
So, coming in, new, how do you go about getting up to speed on all the current projects and stuff, and issues going on? And how do you try to prioritize that in the first 30 days?
Well, first, the first few days, I gotta dive in and see what's going on, what the priorities are, and what needs to move forward quickly, and then, figure out how to essentially do triage, decide how to spend my days, I've gotta find some amount of time to meet all of the department heads, and spend some time with them, and get up to speed on their departments, probably not as much time as I would spend, would be spending if I was coming in here as a permanent, because forging those relationships, if it's going to be short-term, is not the most productive use of my time. But there's really a lot to learn in a short time, and I will find it out quickly. I've been diving through your financials, and the information that I found on the DOR website, so I already know a lot about your financial position, and some of the issues I'd like to look at. For example, I'm a little concerned at your tax collection rates. You've got, for outstanding receipts as a percentage of your total tax levy, you've got in the top 10 delinquencies in the state, I'm not sure if you're aware of that, you're at almost 14%, most of the towns are around 2% around here, with the exception of Warren, which was about 11%.
You're at 14% for what? I'm sorry, again?
In other words, outstanding...
Oh, tax collection.
Tax collection, outstanding receipts that haven't been received, equal about 13.5% of your total tax levy, which is extremely high. And something that we should be looking at, because when, when some people aren't paying their taxes, other citizens have to make that up, and that's not fair. So that's a...
That's just an interesting fact, that's the first time I've heard of that, so...
Well, you'll find it on the DOR website, if you look at the out-of-glance reports, you can find a lot of things. You have a very irregular free cash flow, it seems to go up and down quite a bit, most towns, it's fairly consistent, but you went from, I think, 1.5 million one year, to three, from three and a half to 1.5 to five, and then I think it's been like two this year, in fiscal '23.
You've had some large capital projects.
Yeah, but, and that's another thing, your capital plan is, I think you need a more formal capital plan.
We definitely agree with that, I think all of us agree with that.
I, yeah, I think that's really important, to have a really consistent year-to-year spending, you've got, I know that one of the duties of the town manager was to have an inventory of all town property, but you need to do more than just inventory it, you have to classify it by useful life, figure out when it's bought, what it costs, and what its replacement cost is gonna be, when you need a new one, and that's how you build a capital plan. And you put it out, and you have it in a spreadsheet over time, so, we're gonna need to replace this in this year, and we're estimating it's gonna cost this much, and the next year, and the next year, and the next year, and the years that are high, you borrow for, and then you pay it off in the years that are lower for needs, that's a capital plan, and that's what you need to develop. And I would work on that, but probably not as an interim.
Okay, so as, coming in as an interim, how do you go about putting the budget together? Because obviously, you would be, if you were offered the job, you were coming in right during, when budget season would be starting, and, so how do you put the budget together, making sure that finances remain strong, and then you kind of touched about the capital plan, but how do you make sure, or how do you prioritize capital projects, so that you ensure that items of importance are addressed?
Well, right now, I think you're a little bit ad hoc, I saw a list of your capital items, and it seems that, you know, it's, I don't know what the process was to get to that, it was all through free cash, and I don't know if you decide how much money you've got in free cash this year, and just say, that's how much we're gonna spend, and let the departments fight it out, I've seen that too many times, but certainly, I would be looking at the age of the items, and the remaining utility, and prioritize in that way, without building a specific capital plan. As for the operating budget, I would look at what was done last year, which may not be the way I would want to do it, but I also understand that... But I also understand that it's really disconcerting to have three different budget processes in three years. I would try and, I would try and match the old budget process as much as possible. And I don't know what Ryan's is like. I've never, I've only known him as, I've worked with him before when I was in Sterling and he was in Lancaster. We worked together and we built a veterans district. But beyond that, I really don't know about his management style. I would look at what was done. I would look at last year's budget materials and if they were adequate, I would use that. If I felt that they weren't adequate, I would make the changes I would need to. I have a very specific budget process that I use pretty much everywhere I go with a very strict timetable. And I, that's so there's consistency year-to-year. And I actually, for another job, wrote up an essay on my budget process, which I would share it with you if you request it. But, you know, that's me. That's for, that's for my, when I'm a permanent manager. I would put in a caretaker budget process that is not too different and let the new manager install his. Because you can't have it changing year on year on year. If I was to come here ultimately and I will be applying for the permanent position, I have a budget process that I would put in place that would be starting about now. Where I would be discussing revenues with you, looking for a budget guidelines from the council, creating a budget memo for your review. And you would redline it and tell me any changes you want. And that would go out to the departments for a first draft budget in December. And then we start from there, working on it with various iterations to get it within the working guidelines. I am a true believer in a zero-based budget. I don't like the lazy budgeting process of saying, "Well, you know, you got 1,800 in this line item last year. You can add, you know, 3% to it." Did you use the 1,800? If you didn't use it, why do you need it this year? If you used 3,600, why did you ask me for 18? You know you're not going to get by on 18. And it works both ways. If you're overspending an account, tell me why you're not going to overspend that account next year. If you don't spend out an account, you got to tell me why you need it again. And sometimes there are solid reasons for it. I remember one time I looked at, there was a line item, $3,000 for elevator inspections. Why do you need this? Well, you didn't spend a penny for it last year. Well, we only do them every two years. And if I took it out of the budget last year, then I'd be fighting to get it back this year. So, I kept it in the budget last year, but I do need it this year. And fine, it went back. It went into free cash. But, you know, I don't like free cash to, free cash is, a lot of free cash is a sign of poor budgeting. It means you've actually put too much into various places that you didn't need and it's rolled back as excess capacity the next year. You've overcharged the citizens.
I have a quick follow-up question for you.
Sure.
In your professional experience, how do you feel about financial policies?
I think it's good to have financial policies in place. Sometimes they can be too rigid. For example, in Sterling, they had a policy that they wanted to fully fund the OPEB by a date certain. And it was really a lot of money every year and it was, I don't think terribly realistic, but it was a policy and we had to follow it. I see you're funding OPEB at about $10,000 a year, which is not going to fully fund it in any of our lifetimes. But I guess there's two schools of thought on that. Some towns are very adamant about funding it. Others figure, you know, it's a problem every town has. They're not going to let the whole system blow up. The state's going to take over at some point. And I don't know, you know, where this council feels on that. I think it's going to be somewhere in the middle. I think they're, they're going to, the state's going to provide some relief, but I don't think it's going to fully fund that program.
Since you mentioned OPEB, how do you feel about OPEB being used as a bargaining chip in negotiations for unions?
You mean post-employment benefits? Contribute? I think it's a possibility. Certainly, post-employment benefits are, to some degree, within the control of the town. For example, do you give, if someone was not in the system, do you give them retirement health benefits? You get a, for, let's say there's a teacher who's on their husband's health insurance. She retires. He retires sometime later and loses his health insurance benefits. She comes to the town and says, "I want to get back on, or I want to get on the town insurance." Well, the town can say no. Those are the facts of a specific case, Coach v. Ludlow, which I was involved in the litigation of about 20 years ago. So, you can say, "All right, we'll allow people to rejoin after some period if they weren't on the insurance, if they retire, if they lose whatever retirement health insurance they had." Do you want to make that a benefit? You got to give us something else in return. And that's fair. Now, you know, certain post-retirement benefits are prescribed by law. You can't bargain that. So, you know, there are certain things you can bargain and certain things you can't.
Got you. Thanks.
You touched and spoke about free cash. And the way it's developed, I ask, my question is, how do you build a healthy stabilization fund? As you know, every person needs a savings account for the town.
Well, like anything else, if you want to build a, you can't just rely on free cash. And there will always be some free cash. I mean, you don't spend out every budget if you want to put it into stabilization. But that's hit or miss. If you want to build a healthy stabilization fund, you budget for it, like anything else. It is an expense. You build it into your budget and you, and you say, "We're going to put..." Just like you at home, you probably, or at least I did when I knew I was going to be sending my daughter to college. Thank God she's graduated now, but, you know, every year, every week, that was part of our budget. So much is going into her account. And the town can do the same thing. It's part of your budgeting process to put money into stabilization in case you need it. And you need to have a target amount. What do you want, what do you want to fully fund that stabilization fund? Do you want it to be 5% of your annual budget? Do you want it to be 10? You know, you can't, don't go crazy. You don't need to budget an extra year. But, you know, you may want a certain amount for rainy day, for serious projects that you don't otherwise fund. It's good to have money available.
Thank you. How do you develop working relationship with department heads and your staff by creating a healthy and productive environment?
Right from day one, you're going to meet, and I don't know if, depending on, as an interim, I'm going to have time for this, but if I was coming in as a permanent person, I would be there on the first day, having a department heads meeting, meet everybody and meet and greet and then say, "I'm going to be visiting your department," sometimes within the next day or two, and do that. And meet as many people as I can. Then I would start scheduling one-on-ones with the department heads. I think that's really important to do it with the larger departments on a weekly basis. Because I want to know what's going on in every single department. I don't want to interfere, but I want to be aware of it. In some cases, I can help. A lot of things, I've seen a lot of things over the years. And most towns run and have the same problems. There's a good chance that, you know, a personnel problem in Public Works, I've seen it before. You know, a legal issue, I've seen it before. And I have a lot of technical and legal knowledge, so I can help those department heads when they need it. And I want to forge those relationships. I met the, I met the chief, who's now your acting town manager in the hall. And, you know, I think that's a guy I could really get along with.
Mike, if you just could touch briefly on how you would best inform businesses and residents of goings-on in town? You know, we've got bridge projects, whatever, just more timely...
There's a number of things and I don't know which you're doing. I could only see as a non-resident. But you needed, I think your website could be better and more informative. What we're doing in Ludlow now is there's a, there's a reverse 911 call. I get, you know, I get a call from the town every few days about something's going on or the transfer station's closed or a crash pickup is delayed and all of those things that you want to know. And it's usually the town administrator who's giving the information. I'm going to be using it myself when the next town meeting comes up to notify people a town meeting is available, is coming up. Even if you're not an elected representative, you can attend and you can speak. And you can, here's where you can find a copy of the warrant. That's a good thing to have and I would do the same thing here. But beyond that, social media is out there. There should be a Facebook page and it should be updated fairly regularly. It's a good thing to let the town members know that, you know, things are happening in town and you're working on their behalf. There's lots of ways to get the message out that certainly weren't there 20 years ago.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Any follow-ups? Okay, if you were, if you were offered the job of interim, when would you be able to start?
Tomorrow morning?
Okay.
I do, I can reschedule it. I have a, on the mobile home rent control board in Ludlow, we have one of those. And we have a meeting on Tuesday, but I'll just ask her to move it later.
Okay. And did you have any questions for us or did you have anything that you wanted to highlight that we didn't ask you about?
I mentioned a number of things that were more technical. I'd like to ask you about the process. I know you're supposed, you're planning to vote tonight. How long do you expect this to persist as a job? Two months, three months?
So, we are also interviewing, we've interviewed one firm already to help us with the search. We're doing another interview tonight. We have to make that decision also tonight. So, we are trying to move as quickly as we can. But knowing that things don't always, you know, move smoothly, smoothly, I mean, we hope that the process is less than six months to get someone permanent in place. But I do think that probably two months is a little bit aggressive. We're probably looking at a three to four month period of time that's probably more realistic, especially given the fact that we're going to lose time with Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's. Like, those are going to be weeks where, you know, we will lose productivity. So, I would think it's more likely that it would be a three to four month process. But we do intend to, you know, hit the ground running with both things tonight and get whomever we choose as the consultant for the search probably to meet with them for an initial meeting week after next, only because next week is Thanksgiving week, so... But that's kind of where, that's what I think. But again, do I, do I think we all believe that within a six-month period, this should be resolved? Absolutely.
So, you, as an interim, I would expect to be a part of the budget process from the beginning to pretty much the end. Because I would want a complete budget probably by February and going through whatever review process you wish to put in place. I didn't see anything analogous to the finance committee. Do you fill that role of reviewing the budget on a line-by-line basis?
So, we don't have a finance committee?
I know. I didn't see it.
Yep, so we have a budget subcommittee that's made up of three counselors.
Okay.
And that budget subcommittee, so the whole budget goes to, the manager's budget goes to the full council. And then a subcommittee meets and asks questions and provides input on that budget. And then, once we go through that process, we then bring it back to the full council. We usually do not vote the budget until mid-June because it's a, it's a, basically, it's kind of a city form of government.
Yes, yes. You don't have to.
We do not have to. And so, usually, the, in the charter, I believe it's by March 1st that the town manager has to present a budget. But the process needs, so the process, I can tell you, has not started yet and that's something that whomever is chosen as the interim is going to have to, it's going to have to be one of the number-one priorities, is to get budget documents out to staff and work with the town accountant to do that. I think it's, that should have already happened, probably.
I'm very, I'm familiar with this form of government. If, whether you know or don't know, Ludlow's in the process of looking at a charter change. Not really a charter change. We don't have a charter. But creating a charter probably, and I would be advocating for a council manager form of government. Town meeting has just become very difficult. People are not engaged. I wouldn't, it would not bother me at all to be Ludlow's last-time moderator. So, there it is. So, that's the process and that's good to know. I certainly would like to do the whole budget if I was here because it's tough to take it over in the middle. Because you may get someone who's not really on the same page with priorities.
Absolutely. That can be true.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure what else to add. I can tell you or you can ask me. I mean, if you want any specific questions about my experiences, I can talk about that. I've got a lot of legal experience. I've been a member of the bar for, well, it'll be 31 years this year, next month. And most of the time, I've spent it on municipal law. I'm an MBA. I'm very, very good with budgets and very good with finance. And I'm pretty good with analytics, too.
Any questions?
No.
Okay, well, thank you for your time. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
We will be in touch.
Oh, this doesn't, no wheels on them.
No wheels.
Thank you very much.
Very welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You, too.
Okay. So, would everybody okay if we took a brief recess?
Sure.
So, let's say a 10-minute recess because we are running early.
Yeah.
And I can, what I can do is I can reach out to Bernie to see if he's available to maybe remote in a little bit earlier.
Sure.
Instead of waiting till 8 o'clock. So, we'll take a, we'll take a brief recess and we will be back.
Okay, thanks for your patience. We are back in session. And the next item on the agenda is an interview with Community Paradigm regarding our town manager search. And I will turn the meeting over to Bernie Lynch. And we'll let you start, Bernie. Tell us about your firm. Some of us do, you know, have been on the council the last time you worked with the town. But we have some new members that do not know you.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. I apologize that we were, I apologize that you were so fast and you got to us sooner and we weren't ready to come on. We had squeezed in another Zoom call. Technology's wonderful. It allows us to do all these different meetings all of the, one of you do. My name is Bernie Lynch and I'm joined by Sharon Flaherty. We'd be the people that would be working with you on this. We do have a number of other members of the Community Paradigm team, but we're the ones that will be working with you. My background, for those of you who don't know, is in municipal government. I've been in municipal government now for over 40 years. Primarily in the role as a town manager and city manager. I was town manager at the town of Chelmsford for 20 years. In fact, first town manager of the town. And I was the city manager for the city of Lowell for eight years. And as I just described in another community, eight years may not seem like a long time. But in Lowell, it's the equivalent of being there for 24 years. Everything's tripled. tripled in Lowell. So, it's the...my eight years gives me the ability to say that I was the third-longest city manager in the city, the first manager of the city in 1940, lasted 10 years, the second one lasted one year, the third one lasted eight, and then it's me, who just retired from there in 2014. But in 2014, I made the decision to keep my hand in municipal government by starting Community Paradigm, with the thought that I would dabble in a number of different public management-type efforts, maybe do a recruitment here and there. And recruitment has really taken over the...all of our work. We still do quite a bit of other consulting work, but primarily, we're the most active recruiting firm in Massachusetts. In the last eight years, and I think I've included this in our proposal, but in the last eight years, we've done 100-plus town manager, town administrator searches, more than all of the other firms that are out there combined, by a pretty good amount. And then, we do other positions as well, Finance Directors, Public Works Directors, Police Chiefs, Fire Chiefs, and the like. So, we are pretty active in the marketplace, which we think is an important part of what we do for a community. We know who's out there as candidates, who's out there as potential candidates. Along the same lines, myself and one of the members of the Community Paradigm team, John Petrin, who isn't...won't be working...I don't see him working on this one, we're both very active in the Suffolk University Mass Municipal Association Local Government Certificate Program, which is working to identify the next generation of managers that are out there. It is a very challenging time right now to hire town managers. Over 2/3 of the communities in Massachusetts, and I should probably update that to probably close to 3/4 now, have turned over in the last four-plus years, four or five years. So, it's very much a seller's market. Finding people for these jobs is a challenge, but we have, I think, a good handle on who's out there, who will be able to work at a community. I told you about my background. I'm just going to quickly talk about Sharon's background. Sharon's background is...I'm sorry, Sharon, I'm not going to let you speak on this, because we're on a roll here. Sharon's background is in Communications. She was a newspaper reporter and an editor of a daily newspaper for a number of years, 25 or 27 years, as I think she just described in that other community we're talking to. And she went into Corporate Communications for the financial industry. Basically, what we bring together is the municipal experience that I have, direct municipal experience, her experience covering municipalities, and then being able to take the information that we receive from you and help to market that out as to what makes a community attractive and should highlight what are the desirable qualities that a candidate should have. And then, obviously, she's involved with the fix of the search as well, in terms of evaluating candidates and doing the necessary interviewing during background check phase. So, I think I've covered everything that sort of how we sort of divvy up that work. Our process very much depends upon our knowledge of the marketplace, our knowledge of the job, and the, you know, really working hand-in-hand with the communities we work with. We have a set process, if you will, but we modify it based upon what works for a community. So, we don't just come in total cookie cutter and say, "Okay, this is what you get." We work with you depending upon how you want a screening committee to work, the screening committee process to work, how you want to assess candidates. We consider ourselves pretty much at Yobek and Paul 24/7 during the time that we search process. And we bring our knowledge of the marketplace and our knowledge of the job to help you. So, I know that that's covering everything very quickly. Hopefully, you get a sense of who we are, what we do. I'd be really be interested in having sort of a dialogue and discussion with you about how we go about doing that, and then answering any of your questions.
Does anyone have any specific questions?
Do they physically... Let's see how to say this. Do footwork on their own about the town itself?
Bernie, do you want to just...do you want to talk about, like, briefly about the community profile that you put together?
Sure, sure. And I don't think I included your old one in our proposal. And this is really what Sharon does, is, you know, when we talk to the town about what your needs are in terms of your...the projects you have that are ongoing, the challenges, the opportunities that the town is facing, we try to summarize those in a written document that, you know, really is designed to market what Palmer is all about. Obviously, we include the information about the town, include the information about the form of government, include the information about the finances. We're really focusing on what are the pressing issues facing the town, and what does the ideal candidate look like in terms of, you know, meeting the needs of the town. And that's generally a four-page document that we generate that...and I think quite rightly included one in our proposal.
You did, yes.
You know, and what we've done is, we've sort of changed...because we've been doing this for eight years, we've sort of changed the way many municipalities use those documents. In the past, they were...other firms that were doing this, or other organizations were doing this, basically put together a very boilerplate document that gave the same information and sort of laid it out in a way that didn't encourage the candidates to really delve into what a community was all about, by utilizing more up-to-date technology of...it's really not cutting-edge anymore, but hyperlinks. Let's drive people to documents, tell the candidate it's about. Let's drive them to information, you know, master plans and the like, that sort of explain what's going on in the community. That, to us, is an important part of this. Decisions should just be delivered to the candidate on a platter. We want them delving into the town and scanning what the needs of the town are. So, that's what we do. We would be in touch with department heads, gathering that information, updating the information that we have from four years ago. You know, the proposal that we gave you sort of reflects the fact that we've been in Palmer, and this work before for you. And we would certainly be interested in hearing from you as members of the council a lot of these lines as well, as to what you're looking for from the next town manager.
Anybody else have questions?
When will they be able to start?
So, Bernie, can you go over the timeline that you had kind of outlined in your proposal? So, if you were hired, you know, and also, you know, I want to make sure, too, that this timeline is realistic around the holidays?
Right, right. If I could, can I share my screen?
Yep. If you're not allowed to, let us know.
Yeah, I need the host to say...
I got to. Just give us one sec.
I have some feedback.
You want to ask a question, or?
No. We need another monitor over there, so we can watch, and he can look at us. This is bad.
You're going to need a chiropractor.
Essentially, what we...is getting ready to do this. Essentially, what we envision is a roughly a 14- or 15-week process.
That is what you want.
That is, okay.
To finish.
Okay.
Is it all set?
Hold on, one second.
Okay.
There you go.
Oh, I'm the host now.
Yeah, you're running this thing.
You're to trust we're going to benefit.
He's going to hang up on us.
The power you've given me. So, this is essentially the process that we envisioned. We're, you know, off by about a week here, I guess, because we're in this week now. We would utilize the next couple of weeks to consult with members of the council. Again, it's probably a week at this point, but we would consult with members of the council, gather the information that we need to update that position statement, and generate that so that we probably have that available the week of December 11th, I would say, that we could present it to you and get your go-ahead, that we got the story right as to what you're looking for and what you need. We would then do the actual recruitment and posting of the position that third week of December to probably the first to second week of January. And then, we would, you know, bring candidates, bring the resumes forward to you. We need to talk about how you want that screening process to work. But we would work with you then, with all of those candidates, to identify the ones that are worthy of moving on to be a semifinalist, meaning that they would be called in for an interview with the screening process. And then, out of that, we'd come to finalists that the entire council would be able to...We include within that a background check. And our background checks are not like you might see in some other places where you choose someone, and then they do a background check on that particular person. We actually do background checks of all of our finalists, meaning that we do the query checks to make sure that there's nothing there. We pretty much know all the candidates even before we get to this point, like whether they'd be good candidates, what their work history is. But then, once we choose the finalists, we do that query check, but also, we, at that point, we reach out and we talk to their references. And we get from those references information about the candidates and the process that...of how they go about doing their work on behalf of their town, meaning, you know, what's their decision-making process like? How do they interact with staff? How do they interact with the council members? How do they interact with the public? How do they solve problems? What are the major projects that they've worked on? We generated all of that into a document that we would then pass on to the council. That is usually one to two pages for each candidate. As I often describe, we will do an hour-long interview with each one of our semifinalists. You will probably do an hour-long interview, maybe some other sort of exercise with the candidates during your process, your decision-making process. But we actually spend three to four hours with the references of each. So, if we bring forward three candidates, we're going to spend probably nine to 10 hours just talking to the references of each one of those candidates, so that we have a real understanding of who they are, what they've worked on, so that you can make the best decision possible as to which of those candidates is the best fit for Palmer. And then, we help guide you through the interview process. So...
Good. Okay. Mark, did you have questions?
So, you're curious of the process still, I'm sorry. Not of the process, but you're going to spend all this time with the semifinalists, right? Do you kind of help us...I know we have to do homework and come up with how we want to get to the finalists, but do you have, like, some suggested guidelines or some, you know, kind of keep us on the rails when, you know, when we're trying to figure out who those finalists are?
Oh, in the semifinalist stage?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, when we say semifinalists, so let's just use some numbers here. Let's say that town of Palmer, I would guess that you will have 15 to 20...first off, we're realistic about our recruitment process. We don't just go utilize advertising mechanisms that bring you, you know, 20, 30, 40 people that are totally unqualified for a position of this sort. We're focusing in on who would be the right town...who would be a town manager. And, you know, given your form of government in particular, you want someone who has some experience in municipal government. You want someone who's going to have executive experience in municipal government. So, I'm guessing you're going to probably have somewhere between 15 to 20 applicants, maybe, of whom six to eight will be qualified, is what I'm hoping we have. We would then work with you to narrow that field down. We have to figure out how that's going to be done, given your form of government. We would narrow that down to those six or eight that we called in for an interview. And then, from that six or eight, you know, there's going to be two or three, maybe four, that get passed on as finalists to you. And we would work with...during the screening process with the semifinalists, to make sure that there's assistance that we're providing to get the, you know, interview of those candidates. And then, we would work with the council as a whole to interview those two to four candidates that would be the finalists.
Okay. That was just...that was my question.
Anybody else?
Does this timeline fit into the 100 other candidates that you've got going through right now?
We've done it. Right now, I think right now, we have another eight or nine of sort of, in some form of activity. They're just being advertised. Today, there was a deadline for the town of Foxborough. You know, we just signed another contract with another community earlier today. They're all in different stages.
You'd be honest with us and not take it on if you couldn't support it?
Yes, I would be honest with you and tell you whether we could or not. It's...I will tell you that the proposal is based around the fact that we've been there before, and we've already done some preliminary work on that. That feeds into the timing, feeds into the price. But yes, we believe we can do this for you.
By honest, I mean, say no.
Yeah, yeah.
Say no if you can't do something, if we got to move stuff, you know?
So, one of the questions I have, Bernie, is it seems like it might be just your timeline...it seems like it would be more realistic that we would be heading into March a little bit, just with the holidays, but you don't...I think it was the beginning of February.
Well, he said we're already off a week anyway, so the timeline's going to get pushed a little bit.
So, I mean, is it more realistic that we would probably be doing final interviews in March as opposed to February?
I would say that you'd probably be doing final...I would think that maybe you're doing finalist interviews based upon the timeline that I just had up on the screen. You'd probably be more likely to have...be doing finalists, because we're a couple weeks away from this. You'd probably be doing finalists the end of February.
Okay.
Maybe it would spill into March a little bit, but I would hope that the end of February is when you'd be doing this.
Okay, awesome. All right. So, unless anybody has any other questions. All right. Well, we are going to deliberate tonight on what we're doing to move forward, and we'll be in touch, one way or another.
All right. I appreciate it. And thank you all for having us. We don't talk to you. Have a great Thanksgiving, and hopefully, we'll have an opportunity to speak some more in the future. All right?
Thanks, Bernie.
Thanks, Sharon. Thanks, Sharon.
Even though we didn't get to talk.
Next time you talk, Sharon.
Okay. All right, perfect. All right. Give just a minute to get that over to the seat. We can shut this off. Okay. So, the first thing is, we're going to have a discussion and then a vote regarding the appointment of the interim town manager. And I don't know who wants to start, but...
I wouldn't mind starting. I think that, you know, we had three good candidates. I appreciate everybody who applied, and... I appreciate everybody who, um, applied, and, um, you know, I think the council did a really good job at picking the candidates to interview. Something that resonated, a couple of things resonated with me, um, during Mr. Reed's interview. Um, I think specifically, he mentioned, um, a couple of things around budgeting practices and, um, capital projects, capital budget, financial forecast. I think that would be a fantastic thing to have. And then something else that resonated with me that I really look for in an interim is that this person, they're gonna be here for a short period of time, and I think when you have an interim, it can be an opportunity for the town to, you know, maybe make some difficult decisions or make decisions that aren't based off of previously built-upon relationships. And having somebody come in with that kind of third-party view of, you know, they don't know anybody, they don't have previous history, and being able to, uh, help guide us through some projects and some decision-making and making recommendations to the council. I think that coming in with, with that perspective of, you know, just being a municipal manager and knowing the best practices, um, I think that, given the position that we're in, I think that might be the best way for us to move forward. Given that, I, you know, I do recognize that Charlie does have relationships, and it, it can be helpful to get, hit the ground running, um, by having those relationships, uh, that, you know, from his time as a town manager, and we are looking at such a short period of time. But I just think that, given the position that we're in, maybe if we were in a different position, you know, someone like Charlie would be a better candidate, but I just think that, um, given the time of year that we're in, going into budget season, I really think it would be in our best interest to have somebody with fresh eyes, looking at what we have going on and giving us recommendations on how to move forward.
I also like how he was very, he recognized that trust is earned, not demanded. From, you know, I, I guess I, I like how he's been very more than tactical. If you look back at his resume, right, it's all, you know, it's interim, but it's being able to come in and seem to be able to assess, and I liked his approach, uh, meeting with everyone, meeting with us, getting our direction. Um, you know, I think there's a very good mix of soft skills and technical skills there, as, I mean, you guys are more of a judge of all the laws and, you know, all the stuff we're supposed to be doing. Yeah, I, I kind of agree with you, Jessica. I think it's a good time to maybe not start fresh with everything, but, you know, easily identify those areas where we can make, you know, the low-hanging fruit, right? What are the easy things that we could knock off?
Yeah, there were a couple of key words that he used too that, that really resonated. Transparency was one. You know, we, as a council, over the past, you know, ever long I've been on the council, this is my third term, have been pushing for more transparency and more information to the, to the community. You know, whether we do, uh, you know, we have our town meetings, or, I mean, our, you know, in monthly meetings, or whether we do our community engagement meetings, which we haven't done one in a while. I, I think we should definitely get back to that, where the community comes out, um, and has a, an opportunity to, to just open up and, and tell us how they feel and what they, they think are the issues. And the other thing too is that, you know, he, he said it right in the beginning too, is that this position, even though it's an interim position, you wouldn't treat it any different than you were the regular guy, which is, I like that too, because you wouldn't want somebody to come in here and just, you know, be the, the babysitter, you know? Yeah, we just, we want somebody in here who's gonna do the job and, and just jump in headfirst and, and be able to, to, to take the reins and, and run the town for us, so, yeah, I, I really like that.
Not just being a band-aid.
Correct, yeah. You know, at least he's, you know, what, coming from what he was saying, it, it seems like he would contribute, you know what I mean, and not just sit here and sit back and just make sure things ran fine. He would actually contribute and make a difference, and, and I like that.
Yeah, um, for a lot of those same reasons, it's why, for me, it's a, it's a pretty clear-cut Charlie Blanchard. I mean, he's already been in here recently, physically re-met, he's got the relationships. And again, to the whole time constraint, because we are under the gun, he's done, I forget what he said, but roughly eight budgets already. He's already pulled budgets and tried to reassess, so I think, uh, you know, in the essence of time and his experience, I, I think for me, Charlie's a, a clear-cut choice.
I wanted to just listen to everybody first, is it, I like gathering the thought, but speaking of the first gentleman, right, it was...
The first one was Charlie.
I mean, I'm sorry.
The second one was Bob.
Bob Reed. Yeah, um, you know, anyways, at the last meeting, actually, as, with the discussion, it's like, well, let's just end this and vote right now on Charlie, and, you know, 'cause, I mean, i- it is always easier to go with the known than the unknown, but after listening to all of his, uh, you know, I, I, I did like that he, you know, spoke of different things with the budget, another set of, it's, even though he hasn't been in this town, sometimes that separation, as you speak of, is actually a better and, uh, a, a new building or bonding with, with people versus, you know, not, I, I love Charlie's great, but, um, a new set of eyes, and like, as you stated, I think was your words, and, um, so for that, I, you know, my mind's not quite made up, but I definitely do like that and the fact, as you said, um, you know, to treat it like he was the town manager. That was really good.
Um, if I could just make one more comment to, to Mark's point, um, about building trust, is I do think that, um, giving employees, whether they've been here for twenty years or they've been here for five months, I think giving the employees the opportunity, um, 'cause I do, I feel like, uh, Mr. Reed kind of impressed upon his strategies of building trust. Like, I think our employees deserve that opportunity to have somebody, um, help them kind of learn how to build trust in somebody they don't know, and, um, hopefully that kind of sets them up for some good practices when we do hire our permanent, uh, candidate on what, you know, what to look for, what they deserve as employees, um, and how they should be treated by their town manager. I just, I think I liked Bob's approach to it a little bit better.
I thought the point he made of asking what they, not just as on their job, but personally, hey, how, you know, what do you, you know, good, you need, you know, that kind of resonated with me.
I think one of the comments was, um, people need, need to feel valued.
Yeah.
What's that?
Your mic's like pushed.
That people, people need to feel valued, I think was one of the things that I had written down that he had said. That was, um, good. And then, um, you know, building trust with staff, but also at a personal level, so not necessarily just at a work level, but when he said that, um, you know, that management by walking around, that is something that actually is very important, because everybody is important to the organization regarding, regardless of what your role is. Um, it's really a team. It's a team that makes, makes government work, regardless of what the position is, so, um, but, anyway.
And do you know him?
So, I, yeah, so I, I was just gonna say, I mean, from his resume, you can see he was the interim of Sturbridge.
Okay, that's, that's why I...
Yeah, and so, um, I, I don't remember what the time period he was there, but it was, it was recent, um, because our current town administrator's been there a little over a year. I, I can tell you from experience that the things that he was saying are all things that he did do in Sturbridge. Um, he was very well-respected, um, and again, that's not to say anything, um, badly about Charlie, because we also, like you said, we have, we have...
I think we all, I love Charlie.
So we, you know, we have, um, you know, we have, um, you know, most of us have worked with him, and, you know, it does have the, you know, as Bob said, he's been here before, he could, you know, but I also feel like, uh, Mr. Reed has a lot of experience, if you look at his resume as an interim. Um, he's very well-respected in the field, um, and, um, you know, I think that he could be a very good fit for the town. Um, I think that the employees would, um, would, would appreciate, um, his management perspective, um, and so I, you know, I don't think that we can go wrong. I don't disagree with anything that, that anybody has said on either side.
Has he expressed that he's also looking to be, become it, or is he just does?
He just does interims.
Basically interim, goes in there, tries to...
Personnel.
Okay.
Yeah, he's, he's retired and he's an interim.
Cool.
Yeah.
As is Charlie.
As is Charlie at this point, yes.
The other gentleman?
Yeah, I believe, I, unless I did not hear him correctly, I believe he's, he said his intention was to apply for the position.
Correct, Mike.
Yes, yeah.
The gentleman from Lobo.
Yeah. All right, well, is there any other, um, discussion that we need to have? Okay, otherwise I would, um, entertain a motion.
Um, I would like to make a motion to appoint Robert Reed as the interim town manager upon successful, uh, contract negotiations.
I'll second that.
Okay, so motion by Jessica, second by, uh, Mark. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so motion carries, and, okay, so the next item is discussion regarding the appointment of a consultant for the town manager search. So, a week or so ago, we, we, uh, interviewed, um, the Collins Center. Uh, Mary Icardi, uh, was the representative from the Collins Center. Obviously, we had the interview tonight with, um, Community Paradigm, uh, so I'll open that up for discussion also. Who wants to start?
I'd just go with, uh, Bernie, just because of recent experience, very active, he's obviously tied in. I think in the essence of time, I like, excuse me, his time, timeline, even given the holidays, we should be looking at March at the latest.
Yeah.
I think this is the time, uh, unlike the manager part, um, to stick with who already knows and is dealt with. You know, they've already got all kinds of information in front of them. They're voting town, they're already pulling it up.
They seem to have more experience with the town manager, town administrator hire.
They've got their timeline down, and again, like I said, they've already got a full load of info on it. Sticking with what you know, in this case, I, I'm feeling is the way to go.
Feel like, I, I agree.
Real quick, I, I totally, I know I voted no to go and talk to all these. After trying to get through the fifteen that we had, I was like, I gotta let them know, hey, look, and when you learn something new and, uh, like, okay, I was...
I appreciate that, Phil.
Eating crow. I've eaten a lot of crow in my life, it's not...
That's not crow.
No, I, I, I didn't think it was, I thought, you know, it was up to us to buckle up and do it, but it, quite frankly, it's to do a full-time job and try and do that. I only had a couple of days, I think I got to three quarters of them, and I, I never actually even got down with Charlie's and I, which I really wasn't worried, but, you know, so anyways.
Yeah.
That's who I would...
If this job was, if, if this work was easy, there wouldn't be so many consultants for it.
Well, even that gentleman there, you know, he was the manager of this and that, and said, hey, look, look, hats off, man, he's...
I, I can appreciate, uh, like, I appreciate that Bernie has the experience as a former town manager, um, and I can speak from, like, my experience in this field, that Bernie is super-active. He knows everyone there is to know, so he's already uncovered every stone across the state, um, as far as who would be a good potential candidate in Palmer. So I think I'm just, um, m- most confident that he would be able to, uh, you know, produce the best candidates for us, and really, um, given his experience of doing Palmer already, um, and then, you know, get, if he is given this opportunity to do the search again, um, I think he, him and Sharon would have, you know, the best understanding of who, what Palmer is, who, who we need, um, and so I feel very comfortable moving forward with Community Paradigm.
Yeah, and I, I just want to say, I, I think too that Bernie has definitely done, or his company has done, a lot more executive recruitment searches than, um, the Collins Center, and I think for me, that's the biggest thing, is that he does have the network that is needed, because you, in order to have a really good search, you have to be reaching out to people. You can't just wait for, everyone's not looking at the same time, right? So if, if you're advertising over a two or three-week period and someone's just not checking, you know, the want ads at that point in time, and like he said, they're gonna advertise on ICMA probably, and then it'll be MMA, but if, we're also advertising during a time when we have holidays. So it's like, if people are, you know, not tuned in the week of Christmas, that's a week, but because he has that background of other searches where he has people that might have applied and weren't chosen as the candidate, he can reach out to those people and say, oh, you know, there's this job opening in Palmer. I just feel like he has that networking capability more than the Collins Center. And, you know, I, so I, I too think that, um, we can't go wrong with, with Community Paradigm, so, did you want to speak?
Almost, pretty much everything that I wanted to say has already been touched upon, so.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion.
To hire Community Paradigm. Paradigm, second.
Motion by Phil, second by Matt. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that carries. Okay, perfect. So, next item, um, will be go, to go into executive session under Master Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Number 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. This will be for the interim town manager, um, and I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion.
Second.
And, uh, this will be a roll call vote. Matt?
Yes.
Phil? Jess?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
I vote yes. We will adjourn from executive session, we will not be coming back into open session. Okay, good night, thank you.